All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 6th, 2016. Mr. Munoz, is there anything to report from closed session?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any reportable items from our closed session agenda. However, I was asked to just mention to the community that yesterday, the city filed a lawsuit in a sober living home case against the operator of Luminance Healthcare Group. It's a company that's not complying with existing laws and we're going to be pursuing them. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mayor Protem Vixorik will lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, and if you'll remain standing after that for an invocation.
Mr. Mayor?
Please rise, face the colors, raise your head over your heart, ready to begin.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's invocation will be delivered by Jim Davis from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, chaplain. Thank you.
Shall we pray? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful community of Dana Point. We pray your blessing upon our leaders tonight and all the business of the city. We pray your blessing on our deputies that are serving, our firefighters, all the teachers and administrators, our children, the families and the businesses. We commit it all to you. Keep our city safe, we pray, in your precious name. Amen.
Please proceed. The next portion of tonight's agenda is presentations and proclamations. Moving to the business of the month, Craft House will be business of the month for this month of December. Rachel Johnson, please.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the council. I am pleased to announce the business of the month for December 2016, Craft House. Tonight, we are joined by chef proprietor Blake Melgren. Since he was 10 years old, Blake knew he wanted to be in the restaurant business and started working in restaurants when he was in high school. After high school, he went to LMU and got his degree in marketing. He then started working at Chez Melange in Redondo Beach before moving to New York to study under Danny Meyer, who is one of the most well-known restaurateurs in the business. In February 2014, the perfect location for a restaurant opened in Dana Point at 34094 Pacific Coast Highway in the Lantern District, and Blake moved back to Dana Point. Blake wanted to open his restaurant in Dana Point to help usher in the new and unique foodie movement that was happening and knew that he could help spice things up. Focusing on a unique and changing menu, there's always something new to try at Craft House. Using only locally sourced, fresh ingredients, the menu is based around what they are able to get seasonally. Their fish is caught and delivered within 12 hours of being in the water and has gotten to them as fast as three hours from being in the water to in the restaurant. At the Craft House, they try to push the envelope with taking a unique spin on classics such as their meatloaf. It's one of their most popular items and is made with ground beef, lamb and bacon. In addition to getting their food locally, Craft House has made a point at providing jobs locally as well, with almost all of their employees living in Dana Point. They have also gotten involved with the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce and are working with many of the local restaurants to help grow the foodie culture here in Dana Point. Also, Craft House received a beautification award from the Dana Point Chamber for helping to make Dana Point a more beautiful place with the renovation of their building. They were also nominated for the Best New Restaurant Award from the Architecture Association. On behalf of the City Council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected Business of the Month for December. We wish you many years of continued success.
Thank you, Rachel. Mr. Melgren, if you approach the podium up here, I'd like to deliver a plaque to you. All right, did I hear Rachel say foodie menu? Is that what she said? I'm kind of a foodie, so I really like that. You have a great restaurant there, and I particularly like enjoying sitting on the patio overlooking overlooking Del Prado and sitting there enjoying the open venue that you have there. You guys have done a great job, great service there. You've heard some great people, great menu. Food is excellent, so we thank you. So, I would like to present you with this certificate of recognition, and it reads, "Feared Business of the Month, December 2016. The City of Dana Point takes great pleasure in featuring Craft House located at 34094 Pacific Coast Highway in Dana Point and extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month. By myself and on behalf of the entire City Council, we present you with this certificate of recognition." Would you like to say a few words and invite your family up?
I just want to say thank you for everybody in the city, you know, from our build-out till where we are now, almost nine months in. You guys have been nothing but a great help from when we've had people try to break in. Sheriff's are there right away to solve the problems. The building department made it a breeze for us to get open. Just working with the Chamber and everybody else in the city has really made it great. And thank you guys all for being regulars and coming on in and giving us a try, and thanks for, you know, helping us succeed so far and many years ahead.
Great. Do you have any guests you want to invite up?
No. Just me?
Let's take a picture then. Someone's got to hold down the fort. For the people that couldn't make it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is all yours? Okay, next presentation is December Employee of the Month, Monique Leon. Wow, you have some supporters here this evening. We love Monique. Monique is number one. Very nice.
Monique President, 2020.
Oh, no.
Disturbances in the council chamber, but I think we'll let that one pass. Oh, Mark's there. All right, well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's my honor to recognize Monique as our employee of the month this month, and I'm really honored to represent our team from Community Services here. Monique has been with us since 2007 and has been a recreation leader in the city and really has a heart for recreation. She's a people person, but she got promoted a year ago, and so my experience has been seeing her with special events. And I think my first week at the city, we had the barbecue, and she had 79 really hardcore barbecue team leaders following her every word and her every move. She had them in line, and we had a terrific event. Everything went perfectly, and I can't think of anybody better to receive this award tonight, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Okay, now we have a plaque for you, so let me read it. Certificate of Recognition, Monique Leon, sorry, Employee of the Month, December 2016. Whereas Monique worked for the City of Dana Point from September 3rd, 2007 to August 2nd, 2015, as Administrator Assistant to the Director of Community Services and Parks and provided valuable assistance to the director and staff during that time. With Monique's extensive involvement in assisting at all the city's special events, she found a passion for community events and applied for the vacant Recreation Coordinator position and was hired on August 3rd, 2015, as one of the Recreation Coordinators specifically involved in the department's special event production. Whereas some of Monique's responsibilities include Lead for Recreation, Front Desk, Class and Facility Reservations, Collaboration with the Senior Center for Twilight Dinners and Special Luncheons, Supervision of Part-Time Staff at Special Events and Department Special Event Coordinator. And whereas Monique is part of the team that produces and coordinates 24 major city-sponsored events, these events include but are not limited to: the Festival of Wales, Movie and Concert, Egg Hunts, Fourth of July Fireworks, Movies in the Park, Summer Concerts, Dana Point State Barbecue Championship, Winter Festival, and various collaborative events with local nonprofit organizations. Monique also produces the very highly successful Senior Year, Senior New Year's Eve Dinner Dance and Valentine Dinner Dance, and has been very creative in elevating the enjoyment and popularity of these events with unique themes, decorations, entertainment. Whereas Monique displays five-star customer service in all aspects of her job, and is a valued City of Dana Point employee. And now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Dana Point, I hereby congratulate Monique Leon upon her selection at the City of Dana Point Employee of the Month for December 2016, and express heartfelt appreciation for devoted service to the citizens of Dana Point, and express our sincere thanks for her exemplary service to our community. Congratulations.
Okay, well, it's been great working for this department for nine years, very different capacities over that time, but we are a family, and I wouldn't change it for anything. Thank you.
Do you have any family other than the ones that you have that showed the signs tonight? Okay, great, I think. Come on up, guys.
Mr. Mayor? Could I make just a couple remarks?
Yeah, sure, please.
While she's assembling her guests. So, I'm probably one of the council members up here who attends the most of these special events throughout the year, the senior dances, the concerts in the park in the summer and every other manner of special event we have. I just wanted to thank Monique for her very special help. She's the first person I see when I show up there, she's the last person I see when I leave. She sets the tone for the event, she always has a smile on her face, and she cares about everybody who's a part of that, the city staff, the attendees. There couldn't be a more perfect match for this job, and I just wanted to, Monique, I just wanted to single you out for some special praise there because I think you really deserve it from someone who's watched you for eight years. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Madam Clerk, are there any items to be removed by staff?
You mean by the residents? No, I have none.
How about by the staff? From staff, no. From council members? Seeing none.
I'll move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's immediately moved and seconded to move the consent calendar. Please cast your vote. Okay, the motion to approve the consent counter carries five to zero. Thank you. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles of any ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no ordinance titles to read this evening. Thank you.
We're moving quite a clip here, 15 minutes. Moving on to public comments, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for public comments portion of the agenda. To mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to City Council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have, and please remember to state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, we have four public comment speakers tonight. The first will be Beth Mays, followed by Rick Erkanoff, and then Wayne Rayfield, and then Penny Maynard. Beth Mays, please.
Hello, my name is Beth Mays, and I am the Student Services Coordinator for Anaheim University, and I'm here tonight for two reasons. The first is to introduce you to Anaheim University, and the second is to discuss the issue of student debt, which we all know is quite a major problem these days. Anaheim University was founded in 1996, and we have been a pioneer in online graduate education since our founding, so for 20 years, we've been doing this. And we currently have students and professors in 40 countries all over the world, which is really quite exciting. And our motto is "Students First Always," and in that spirit, we are always looking for a way to make quality education as affordable as possible. Because, as I mentioned just a moment ago, student debt really is a major problem in this country facing people in all walks of life. I myself have two master's degrees, and I was very lucky to earn a number of scholarships while going through my education process, but I'm still buried under student debt. It's going to take me years to get it paid off, and it will affect every aspect of my life, you know, until I can. And I'm so excited and honored to be a part of Anaheim University, to be a part of an education institution that wants to be part of a solution to this problem rather than a participant in it or just see it as kind of the status quo. And in that spirit, we are announcing our new tuition relief program, which was created with the support of our good friend actress Carol Burnett, and is eligible for our online graduate business programs, specifically our International Business Program, our Sustainable Management Program, and our Masters of Entrepreneurship. And in the desire to eliminate student debt, we are able to reduce the cost of these programs to under $5,000. These are programs that are designed for working professionals. They can be earned in 18 months. They are nationally accredited through the DEAC. We've been accredited for nine years with a perfect accreditation record, which we're very, very proud of. Students can make monthly payment plans to us of $250 and earn an MBA degree, which will allow them to earn a promotion or grow their own business or any manner of benefits that you can get from having a good, solid business foundation. So, this is available to all of our incoming students in January of 2017. We would like to invite you to take a look at our website, Anaheim.edu, for more information about our programs. If you feel like making a drive, you can always come visit our admissions office up on State College Boulevard, and we would just encourage you to take a look at our university and see what we're doing to put students first always. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Rick Erkanoff, please.
Good evening, the honorable council, staff. I'd just like to personally thank the outgoing council members, Carlos and Scott. It's been a lot of years of service by both of you. We haven't always agreed on things. It's been quite contentious at times, from some of the different hats I wear in the community, of course, Scott's service with the TCA. We finally came to a resolution historically to save trestles from the 241 toll road. I never thought that that would happen, and it was great to see Scott at that final meeting make a wise decision, in my opinion. We've battled with the Strands Gate within the community. It's great that the city's come to a resolution, and we've come to an agreement in terms of settling that, so thank you again for the hard work of this council and staff. Scott specifically, over the years, even though we haven't seen eye to eye on some things, we've become friends. I've personally enjoyed seeing how much he contributes to the community, both financially and in his time. His financial contributions to socia, I think, are unmatched by any individual. He contributes thousands of dollars in scholarships every year for the outgoing seniors at Dana Hills High School, which I think is really a great tip of the hat to kind of honor his commitment to arts and culture in the community, of course, the Dana Point Symphony, all the concerts in the park. Hopefully, you'll still be invited up to play your violin and salute our country at those public events, but again, I'd like to say thank you for your literally decades of service on that side of the dais, and hopefully we'll see a lot of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Wayne Rayfield, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff members. Well, I want to follow up on Rick's comments, and tonight is a bit of a bittersweet night because two of your colleagues are moving on, and I wanted to thank Carlos and Scott for all they've done, not only for the city, but for our community. Their fingerprints are all over, and I really appreciate knowing both of these gentlemen, considering them friends, and thank you so much, Carlos and Scott, for all you've done for paradise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Penny Maynard.
My name is Penny Maynard, and I am a 20-year resident of Dana Point, and I want to thank the city, all of you, for a wonderful job and a wonderful city, and I just want to say, you're all wonderful. And I had an issue, oh, and I want to congratulate the two elected, the two new city council people who are here in the audience. And I wanted to follow up because I'm not going to give up on districts in the city of Dana Point. I think one of the underlying impressions I got during the campaign was that people did not feel connected with their elected officials, and I think having districts in a community connects you to your candidate, your elected official. They have it in San Juan, and I spoke to a former mayor, and he said it's going very well, and St. Clemente will have it in a year or two. I know that it isn't a popular, it isn't that popular, but I think it's a good idea, and we have about 482 cities in Dana Point, or towns in Dana, in California, and 120 or so already in districts, have district voting. And the Constitution has, in each state, two at-large senators and then congressmen because the congresspeople connect directly with the elected officials, and I think that's a good, if it's good enough for the Constitution, it should be good enough for Dana Point. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the public comments portion of tonight's agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to unfinished business, item number 10. Mr. Killebrew, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is a proposed memorandum of understanding between the city and the Hobie Memorial Foundation, and I'm going to turn it over to Ursula, who I believe also is going to be supportive with some presentation assistance from the foundation itself, so turn it over to Ursula.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson, members of the city council. As Mr. Killebrew mentioned, the item before you this evening is consideration to authorize the acting city manager to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding, or an MOU, with the Hobie Memorial Foundation. The purpose of the MOU would be to memorialize a city contribution toward the foundation's fundraising efforts. Salient points of the MOU would include a dollar-for-dollar match, up to 50% of the cost of the memorial, and not to exceed $200,000. Delivery of the memorial within one year of execution of the MOU. The city maintains final approval of the artwork, and upon final installation, the memorial would be dedicated to the city. The initial funding for the memorial will come from available undesignated fund balance with repayment from the Art in Public Places fee generated by the South Cove Project. The South Cove Project will generate $90,375 in art in public places in Lufy's, which is half a percent of the construction cost of the project. Only up to $200,000 is proposed as a contribution to the memorial, leaving approximately $93,000 for public art elsewhere in the city. Under the Art in Public Places ordinance, the applicant, in this case Zephyr Partners, is not required to deposit the in-lufy fees until prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Based on the phasing plan shared by Zephyr, it is anticipated that the first certificate of occupancy would be issued around June of 2017. The entire in-lufy will be due and payable prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. By fronting the money to the foundation, as they provide proof of funds received, so for the dollar-for-dollar match, it enables the foundation to start the fabrication of the art. The city's risk is minimized. It is roughly a six-month time period that the city will front funds before receiving the entirety of the art in public places in Lufy and likely not. places in Lufy, and likely not all of that would be distributed prior to summer. Toward the conclusion of the presentation on the linear park that you received on November 1st, staff informed you of the intention to bring a proposed MOU with the foundation to memorialize a contribution to the Hobie Memorial Foundation, utilizing art in public places in Lufy's. I'd now like to invite Robbie Robinson with the Hobie Memorial Foundation to give you a brief presentation identifying the members of the foundation and the mission of the foundation.
Hello, city council, staff. My name's Robbie Roberson, and I'm a 65-year resident of Dana Point. Anybody close to that? Okay. I wanted to introduce you to the foundation members, because we've assembled a heck of a crew. They're excellent people with a well-rounded foundation. I'd like to start with Barbara Johannes. Do you want to stand? Show everybody. Okay. Next to her, Bruce Bill, Nancy Jenkins, Karen Schnell, and Donna Jost, and our artist Lance Jost. Anyway, here's, we brought a model of the memorial, and I just wanted to go into a little bit of our due diligence, which we've already done. We've done some fundraising. We have had, we've had booths at the summer concert series, and we've done presentations to the yacht club, the rotary club, and we're a nonprofit status now. And we've raised some funds and pledges, about $75,000 so far. We have plans to raise more funds. We have a golf tournament at the ranch in Liso there. In May, I believe, May 15th is going to be a golf tournament. And we're still very active in fundraising and trying to come up with new ways to do it. I just, I wanted to also say, I've worked for Hobie personally for about 45 years. Okay, when I was 17, I started at the surfboard factory, and shortly thereafter, I got drafted building the Hobie 14. The Hobie, and we go, well, why the Hobie 14? Well, let's start with why Hobie, okay? Hobie, you know, he just happens to have his name on some stores, starting from Corona del Mar to Laguna Beach to Dana Point to St. Clemente and to Oceanside. And what he represents, I think, is what's important to our heritage, Dana Point. You know, what he, what he really achieved here, putting us on the map. The surfboard industry, he was instrumental in mass producing the surfboard. And surfing now has grown so big, it's just, it's, there's some figures, we'll let our Bruce Bill let you know on those. Skateboarding, same thing. Hobie developed urethane wheels for skateboarding, and that's growing by leaps and bounds. The Hobie Cat, the Hobie 14, represents quite a product. And now, I see, am I going to have to get to go over three minutes? Anyway.
Yeah, please proceed. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, guys. The Hobie 14 represents some construction methods that are, that Hobie developed himself. And here we are 40 years later, 50 years later, and most boats are built in the same construction manner that Hobie designed. And so, that's kind of why we're looking at the Hobie 14, memorializing it. We're hoping to get it at the Smithsonian Institute. The Smithsonian has just adopted the Endless Summer, the movie, surf movie, which was put together here in Dana Point by Bruce Brown. The band that played was from St. Clemente, the Sandells. They got a little fame out of it. And, but back to Hobie, you know, why are we doing Hobie, you know? He, I think, you know, Dana Point needs to embrace our heritage, and I think our surfing heritage, Hobie, the Hobie Cat, and everything that goes along with it is pretty much what we have to look after. You know, that is our heritage here. We don't have special apples or oranges. We have surfing and the Hobie Cat that started here. And I got to work on the first Hobie 14 in 1968, okay, the first couple of boats. Eventually, eventually, there were 300,000 Hobie Cats built. That's a lot of boats. In San Juan Capistrano, where our factories were before they moved to Oceanside and Irvine, it started behind the post office in Capistrano Beach. And in 1976, when we, the country was having its bicentennial, we were doing 90 boats a day for four days of the week. 90 boats a day. It's just incredible. We had semi-trucks with resin and fiberglass coming in. We were the biggest boat builder in the world, right here in San Juan. And the surfboard factory was, you know, pumping out boards. I remember doing, you know, 15, 20 boards a day. I used to take them up to LAX, to all the air freight companies, so I had a part of that. But for me personally, I stayed building boats. And the Hobie 14, and what it represents, is our real heritage here. The, back to Hobie, and the kind of person he was, entrepreneur, and all the products that Hobie developed and marketed is just incredible. We, now we have Shark Tank, and everybody wants to go on Shark Tank and raise money. Well, Hobie was doing that 40 years ago, you know, 50 years ago. And he just, as a person, he was one of the greatest people, if you got to know him. I don't think too many people here really got to know Hobie, or know who he is, or what he looked like. Part of our memorial is to keep his flame alive. We need to keep, because he's the history here. Here, this is, this is our history, and we need to keep people aware, the young kids, of who he was and what he accomplished. And that's part of our foundation. What we're looking to do is not only just build the memorial, is to go further and look to hand out scholarships to promising young kids that are, that are a little mechanically inclined, not so much on the computer and this and that, but more mechanically inclined, that has, has a little bit of that intuition of creating a product. We would like to stay in the watersport area, and, but it's something to be considered. So, the memorial, we've done a lot of due diligence, and one of the issues was, where are we going to put this thing? In the beginning, we looked up at the north end of town, and kind of in some other spots. And along comes Zephyr and Ursula, just beautiful. She kind of went crazy because they had plans for the linear park, and they were looking for something like this. And so, we got together with Ursula and Zephyr. Zephyr's really behind it, as using the memorial as a centerpiece. And so, they have artist renderings of it and everything. A little more critiquing to do on the final design. Zephyr, Zephyr's going to build the base, and so, what we're going to do is supply the art object just to lay down on the, on the base and bolt it down, pretty much. So, that's going to cut some costs out of it. The, we've got a budget worked out that's pretty conservative, with a little bit of a cushion. And I think what we're really looking to do is ask the city to share with the art in public places money with us, because this memorial is going to be a destination for people, people that knew Hobie, people maybe didn't know him but want to learn about Hobie. And it's going to be a place where people can come and sit around it and reminisce about him. But it's more of a destination for us. And I think, you know, with the, and the artist renderings kind of don't do it justice, but the height of the three-story condos behind it are a lot higher than the mast, okay? And so, it's really not something that's just going to be a big eyesore out there, and people are going to go, what's that thing doing here? It's kind of protected by the overpass and the Carl's Jr. Shopping Center there. So, it's kind of stuck in an area where the windage isn't going to be bad. It's a pretty nice area. Living here for so long, I'm very well aware of the wind direction, the different weather scenarios. So, I think that is really one of the best spots. And so, we're just moving forward, and we would like to, we would like to present it in the summer, next summer, for Zephyr's grand opening. And they're really behind us. They really like the whole idea. They are really behind our surfing heritage, which is really a big part of it. But I'm going to stay on just the boats and the Hobie memorial. And I just think it's a good way to memorialize Hobie and make sure we keep his flame alive. And so, if anybody has any questions, I can answer what I can and be glad to answer to them.
And if I can just add, prior to accepting questions, that the first surf shop in the United States, and probably in the world, was here in Dana Point. And today, the surf and skate industry are projected to be worth $7.2 billion in 2017. So, the birth of that industry was, was right here in Dana Point, which is, is pretty phenomenal. The scale of the art, we think, is very appropriate for the linear park, has been, has been presented to you, and probably unlikely appropriate in many other locations in town. And I did want to mention that the groundbreaking for that linear park is scheduled to be on January 26th, and formal invitations will be forthcoming. And the foundation has talked a lot about some of their exciting fundraising efforts, including the golf tournament, potential regatta. So, they definitely have plans to do some, some great fundraising, to not only memorialize Hobie through this memorial, but through other efforts, as mentioned. And so, with that, staff or Mr. Roberson is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ursula. Great. So, if there's any questions that we can answer for you, that would be time, time to move on that.
Any questions for council members?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Roberson. I mean, that was a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I'm behind this project. I have a couple of issues with, with the staff report. I have a lot of questions about this. In particular, we're talking about approving an MOU tonight. That's not part of our package, first of all. I mean, I guess. But, you know, when I first heard about this project probably a year ago, I understood that the foundation was going to raise all the money for the memorial, and we were, and the city was trying to find a place for that.
Mm-hmm.
Was I miss, did I misunderstand that at the time?
Well, even, even a year ago, it was suggested to the foundation that the city might come on board. And what capacity, it was just, it was just unknown. We, we've already started building it. We've, we've used some modern technology here that is really great, metrology, a company called Hexagon out of Lake Forest. Our artist Lance approached them for the body. The hardest part is getting the body of Hobie right. I mean, his facial features and his body. So, one of Hobie's sons got us a model, and we put him on a boat, and this Hexagon metrology company came in with a scanner. They have a laser arm that scanned the body, and it produced the body, I mean, within thousands of what the body actually was. So...
I mean, I appreciate all that. I understand there's going to be a lot of work in this, but it goes back to my original question. Did I misunderstand that the intent was the city was going to provide a location for it, and the foundation was going to pay for the memorial?
Uh-huh.
Is that a, did I misunderstand that, or what changed?
Well...
Now, we're looking at, you know, paying, finding a location and paying for half of it.
Right, right. Well, things do change, but in, in the defense of all that, the, you know, when we started, we're, we're just thinking, you know, try to raise money for the whole thing. And this arts, and then the arts in public places thing came up, where, you know, that's just what they use the money for, is art pieces. So, now we're situated where we can, we think we can raise enough funds to finish half of it, and then we would look at, to team up with the city on the arts in public places for the other half, for the matching funds. And...
Well, what about the surf industry?
Pardon me?
Have you reached out to the other members of the surf industry? I mean...
Oh, we, yeah, we plan on it.
You have some very big players right here in the area that...
Yeah, yeah. No, we plan on it. The, the golf tournament, for instance, a lot of the surf companies will be invited for that type of a thing. A lot of Hobie's close friends will be invited. And one thing that goes on here is that after it's built, it belongs to the city. It's not, it's not something, in the beginning, I mean, we didn't have the Zephyr site, and we didn't have the potential, the city matching funds. So, it's, it's like, okay, the foundation has this memorial. Well, what do we do with it? You know, we raised funds, we paid for it. But now, the way it's working out is, it belongs to the city. And the city is going to have a say in the design of this. City's going to have a say in the engineering. And we're, the next step, as soon as our MOU is signed, we meet with the city plant, the city engineers, and we go over the total construction of it. Zephyr already has the blueprints for the base, all the rebar layouts and everything. So, they're moving forward. This, this is the greatest thing for Zephyr. I mean, who wants to look at three-story condos right on the beach? So, this, this is going to be a real, real plus for Zephyr. So, they're ready to start building the base. They have to calculate weights. So, we're just, we're kind of at a point where, if we can get an MOU signed and some commitment from the city, then, you know, we're open arms to let the city comment on it, you know? If there's something you don't like about it, well, let's talk about it. But more or less, the engineering.
I understand the engineering of the base and things, but I think you're probably far better qualified to make decisions on what this should look like than the city.
Well, yeah, but we want to go through the right channels.
I understand. These are questions are going to be for, for Ursula. So, we have about, let's just estimate, $300,000 in art in public, in Lufy's. You're asking for two-thirds of that to go to one project, correct?
Yes.
So, what are we going to, what, what money do we have for the additional sculptures that are supposed to be down in the linear park? And, and do you think it's reasonable to spend two-thirds of this money in one location instead of trying to spread it through some of the other parks in the city?
The other sculptures would be funded through the park dedication in Lufy's. So, that $2.3 million that was disclosed during the presentation, that was given on November 1st. So, that's how those would be funded. This, the scale of this particular art piece is much larger than those other sculptures, and so, it's more expensive. And so, the project through, you know, project exactions is funding the other sculptures, and this is another art in public places in Lufy, or an exaction, you could call it, and is being proposed to fund, yes, half of this particular sculpture, which is of a much larger scale. And it does leave an additional, close to $100,000 for art in, in other places that the city has discretion to spend.
Okay. And there, there's another place in here where it says, "The city will provide a match upon the execution of the agreement for commitments to the memorial made by Hobie Cat in the amount of $50,000 and $10,000 from the Dana Point Historical Society." So, we're adding another $60,000?
No, that's included as part of the $200,000. It's just that they already have commitments from Hobie Cat in the amount of $50,000, and from the Historical Society in 10. So, they have $60,000 that they already have hard commitments for. We would match that. But the $200,000 would, it'd be $200,000 less $60,000.
So...
If the statue sculpture artwork ends up costing $400,000.
So, we're putting, you know, I hate to put it this way, because I do, I like this project, and I want to see it go forward. But, so, we're going to put a huge advertisement for Hobie Cat right at the entrance to the city where it all started, and they're paying $50,000, and we're paying $200,000. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it does. But then, another way to look at it, too...
I mean, that's a, that's like a...
What if this goes into the Smithsonian? It's like having the spirit of St. Louis in your backyard. in your backyard. But, you know, we're really honoring...
But it, but it's, you know, it's not the Spirit of St. Louis.
I understand that.
Because the Spirit of St. Louis is an actual plane. If I had Hobie Cat number one sitting right there, I may be, I may agree with you on that.
Well, but then a sculpture of the, you know, like, was made in San Diego. San Diego shouldn't have...
This is a big chunk of money for the city to contribute to this. And I'm looking at, you know, you know, this is a great, this is great for our community. But, you know, even the company is putting in less than 50% of what the city is going to do.
Let me put something into perspective, sir.
Okay.
The sculpture that's going to be next to it, the famous Phil Edwards, who was very instrumental in the Hobie Cat development and Hobie and building surfboards. You've heard of Phil Edwards. Well, he's going to be the, hopefully by Hobie's side here. Well, his sculptures, $80,000, maybe 100 by the time it gets done. And that's just a man standing on a surfboard going like this. Look at what we're, what we're building for three, three and a half. So...
You know, I just, you know, when I looked at the, it just goes back to where I thought this project started and where it is today.
Okay.
And the commitment that the city is now being asked to make is far different from what I understood when it was first presented to me over a year ago. So I'm a little concerned. I think it's a good project. I'll just let some of the other...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, add one thing. The staff report that was put together by staff, and I'm assuming that they received this information from the foundation, says that the mission statement of the foundation is to work towards acquiring public and private funding to construct a memorial honoring Hobie Alter's life. So I'm not sure that this is necessarily inconsistent with that mission. We're a public agency, so one of the, part of the mission. I'm not sure how that was communicated or not initially, but I think it's always been part of the mission.
Well, Ms. Luna Reynosa, we talked about this today and the reason that the foundation is here is because I wanted to hear from them, because I didn't know who it was.
We, in our due diligence, we have approached the art committee, the art committee, and shown them our project and everything. And so now we're kind of showing it off to the city council to get their approval and ask them for help in the funding. And I think, you know, we've taken all the right steps. We have a very competent crew. And I, I don't see any, any pitfalls, really. It's not that big of a project. I've supervised building million, multimillion-dollar yachts, $6 million yachts. This is just a small, little art project. And, you know, we're, cut the costs where we can. But it's, the value to the Dana Point is just incredible. I think everybody's got to agree on that. I hate to say it where it is, you know, it's going to be at a bus stop, but maybe, maybe that's going to be a good thing, you know? An easier, easy destination to get to, you know? And then it falls right in line with the Surfing Heritage Museum that we...
Oh, that brings up another...
We definitely need to have that in Dana Point. So, yeah, as a matter of funding, I, I just think it's a win-win for Dana Point, you know, based on the amount of money that we're talking about.
Chef?
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Mayor, we should probably defer council discussion to this to the council discussion portion, although it's appropriate that, that Mr. Muller or any of us ask questions
Sure.
of speakers and of staff and everything during this particular time. And I know everybody's going to have some, some pretty thoughtful things about this. But I'd just like to ask one brief question of Ms. Luna Reynosa at the time. So under California state law, when you make an exaction for a subdivision, which is what you've done here at, at the Zephyr project, that exaction, in fact, under U.S. constitutional law, that exaction has to be proportional or have a nexus to the externalities thrown off by the project, the value of the project. There has to be some proportion to it. And I was just wondering, since it is a large number and it is a large piece of art, does it, does it meet the nexus requirement in terms of the amount of dollars set aside in art in public places?
Well, I think staff feels that it does. There wasn't a specific analysis or nexus study done, but certainly the...
Just, just your reasoning would be playing for me.
Right. Yes. We reasonably think it is.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rivera, please.
Question for staff. Besides the Zephyr project, we've got another project that's been permitted, that's going to be paying into our art and public places funds. Do you have an estimate? Like you said, we won't collect any of that until after the occupancy permits are issued. But do you have an estimate of what those total funds would be, which will be new to that fund?
Well, the Art in Public Places ordinance requires that any project over 50 million, no, 1 million, over $1 million is required to pay, is required to provide public art. So they can provide public art onsite or offsite if there's not an appropriate onsite location. Or they can pay an in-lufi, which would be equivalent to what the value of the public art was required to be, which is half a percent of the construction cost. So we have recently approved a project that met the threshold, Gloria Day Church. And instead of paying the in-lufi, they opted to put art onsite. So I can't predict what the applicant, it's up to their discretion to decide whether they want to provide art onsite or pay the in-lufi. I believe that I'd have to go back and look at the various resolutions for project approval. South Shore's church is going to be one that will trigger the requirement. I can't recall if they decided to put it onsite or pay the in-lufi. We don't know what the in-lufi is until they go to pull building permits, because that's when it's valued for construction. So other projects that have been entitled, we do put as a condition of approval whether they're opting to do the art onsite or pay the fee. And they're required to do that. And the fee is required to be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
So, and, so for this one, Zephyr has already indicated that they will provide $300,000?
It's the $290, $292.375 and 22 cents. And they have come in for building permits. So we, that just happened recently. So it's been valued and that's how we were able to determine the half a percent of the construction costs.
And what's our current balance in our fund for art in public places?
There's over $100,000 in there currently, I think 117.
So I'm going to guess, if I look at Rain Tree, South Shores, where permits have been issued, we could probably get another couple of hundred thousand dollars.
If they've opted to do the in-lufis versus onsite.
If they choose to do the in-lufis.
Correct. Yes.
So our, our fund balance is going to remain fairly constant over this time, over the period.
Yeah. Yes. And I mean, and going back to the nexus, we absolutely need to spend that on public art at some point. That money needs to be spent on public art.
And in reality, this isn't city money.
It, it's money that needs to be used...
We collect it.
We collect it and needs to be spent on public art. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Either Mr. Keller-Broom or Ms. Luna Reynosa. How many other projects have we done as the past few years where we've done, we've used funds from the art, culture, or arts and public places program? Do we, do we have any idea on that?
There's been very few where, in the last several years, like during the recession, I don't believe we saw any. But as far as paying the in-lufi, not many. But we've seen projects that were putting art on their own project sites. I can recall one of the houses that are down below Gelson's next to the golf course. They did a public art piece there. And if you look across the street from the community center, I think it's Village Drive entrance, you'll see artwork there. So in the nine years I've been here, there's been very few contributions. Oh, yes, Strands had, had some artwork as well that they put onsite. So there wasn't an in-lufi paid.
I think the St. Regis, when it was built, they did the artwork onsite. That's typically the route that's selected, is to do their own artwork onsite instead of paying the in-lufi.
So this balance has been sitting in the fund for quite some time and remains relatively constant.
It's balanced between 134,000 and now 117, pretty much since I've been here.
Okay. No further questions from me. Any further questions from council? Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I have a couple for the foundation, just to follow up on some of the comments. I think you can see there, there's support for the project, obviously. But our, our job is to exercise, you know, fiduciary responsibility, make sure that money is being spent.
We encourage the participation of the city.
In the right way. So please understand the purpose of these questions. You know, and when we're asked to now contribute basically 50% of the project, and, you know, I know you mentioned this is, I think you said it was a fairly inexpensive project. And I'm not an artist myself, but when I hear something is, you know, $400,000, that sounds like a lot of money to me. And when we're spending $200,000, you know, we, we need to make sure that it's something that the community really is behind. So, and, and one thing that we need to be is, is transparent. And when we are spending the money. So, you know, I, I need some clarification on exactly what's going on in terms of how was the artist chosen? You know, what did you have bids for? How much the project was? Now, how did you arrive at this figure? Can you give me some of that information? Was this all done by the foundation?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah. When we first started, our artist Lance Jost, it was his concept. Hobie passed away about two years ago. So Lance came to me with a napkin and a pencil. Here, this is what I envisioned, Robbie. What do you think? So I, I approached the family. We got permission from the family to use Hobie's brand on anything related to the foundation. That's a big one. You know, they just don't throw that A, that flying H around to anybody. And, and then Hobie Cat just bought the rights to the brand. So the brand's staying in the, kind of in the family. And so Lance, Lance and I started putting together and, you know, seeing what it would cost to do it and how we wanted to do it and everything. And Lance works with a couple of foundries. And he's got quotes from 280 to 350,000 from the foundry. And, and so Lance, you know, he's, he's participating on his level, what he can do. He's doing the body now in clay. And we've already spent money to get the body going and show people that we're for real. We're, we're going to do this. We're just not thinking about it. That model right there is valued at, what? $14,000? Just for the model? The guy on the East Coast built it for us? So with the in-kind donation, the model, valued at 14,000, we're pretty serious. And I just, I just have to add, you know, every city needs a hero. You know, every community has to have a hero. And what bigger hero for Dana Point than Mr. Hobie Alter? I mean, it's...
I understand that last part. I think you sold us on that. I mean, that's not the questions that we're asking. You know, the, again, we state, the project is a good one.
Yeah.
But again, it comes down to the, the funding aspect of it.
The funding aspect, I understand. Zephyr's helping out. They're, they're going to, they're committing to do the base. The base was a, a big part of it. So we're looking at the wave, that's bronze, cast bronze wave, the boat, the sail and the body and everything, at about $325,000. Now, we, we think it's, it's wise to add a cushion there. And if we don't use it, then it, it's not going to be spent. Okay? And we're, we're just going to build, after the memorial's built, we're not going to come to the city for any more money. We're going to move on with our fundraising and try to put out some scholarships and, you know, keep the foundation going. So in actuality, to get the monument built, where we can bolt it down, so to speak, on Zephyr's base, we're looking at about, say, $350,000.
Okay. And I, you, the Surfing Heritage Museum was brought up.
Yes.
And you started to speak, it seemed like you had something you wanted to come up on.
Well, I'm passionate to it. I speak with Dick Metz all the time. And he mentioned, well, we have to stay together. You know, we have to keep the memorial and the surf museum. This is our heritage. This, this is Dana Point. This is where it all, this is ground zero. Okay? This isn't someplace in Montana. This is ground zero. So we need to capitalize on that. You got Huntington Beach calling themselves Surf City. It's crap. Yep. This is, this is the ground zero, right here. Dana, I went to cop, I went to school at University of Doheny. But this is ground zero. And we need to embrace that and capitalize on it, advertise on it.
What, what does the foundation intend to do? What's your vision for your inner relationship with the, with the museum? Are, what do you plan to do there? Do you think you're going to come back to the city for help with that as well?
Well, hopefully not. Hopefully our fundraising efforts, see, we have, we have some special people out there that make money on using that H. Okay? And this is, this is big. All the stores, the clothing, the sunglass, everything, they're making a lot of money on that H. And as long as, you know, we're doing projects to support the Hobie name, Hobie himself personally, the man, then we can call on these people. And I just, you know, one thing, Hobie, Hobie was just kind of a guy, he started before it was popular to work with the Wounded Warriors. He started a swim with dolphins, swimming pool in Oceanside, funded it himself. So people in wheelchairs and disabled people could swim with dolphins. And he did not want his name on it at all. He's just an incredible man.
You mentioned going out and, and the question was previously, previously asked, I believe, about the surf industry. And you've been reaching out to, what I'm curious about is, what kind of response are you getting? Are they saying, we're only going to give you so much? Or why? I'm curious what the response has been.
Oh, the surf industry?
Why is there's a necessity to even come to the city when we have such a surf industry in our area?
Yeah. This is, this is kind of broken into the boating world and the surfing world. Okay? And that's what Hobie really represents. He was, he was credited with some of the America's Cup, the big catamarans racing, which just blew, blew the whole sailing world on its ear. They took Hobie up to San Francisco, showed him the boats and let him, you know, he's in a wheelchair and everything. It was really emotional. And even some of the comments from Larry Ellison gave Hobie credit for the catamarans being in the America's Cup race. Okay? And it was, it's not that he was instrumental, but he had a, had a hand in it developing the Hobie Cat. And, you know, with that evolving. But what's really interesting about Hobie and the Hobie Cats is this construction technology, the foam sandwich technology. Most boats are built that way here 50 years later. So...
Well, it sounds like, you know, you mentioned Larry Ellison. He's supportive, again, of the concept. I'm wondering, where is he financially on this?
Well, we're, we've got some tricks up our sleeves for fundraising. We have this and that. And we, we want to get the memorial completed and presented for Zephyr's grand opening. I think it's only appropriate. And so that's why we're coming to the city. We've gone through the Arts and Cultural Commission. We've done all our due diligence. And so we're coming to the city council to see about sharing with the art and public places funding, which is, this is what Zephyr wants. They're putting money in. Zephyr's going to get what they want, you know? And, and it's going to be a real benefit to the whole area.
Okay. Thank you. Let me shift some of my questions to staff, maybe. The, the park, it, we're talking about Zephyr. This is what Zephyr wants. And does the park belong to Zephyr or does it belong to the city?
Well, Zephyr is designing the park. They're constructing it. They're installing all of the art pieces. And when it's completed, they will dedicate it to the city.
So the city will own the park where this is going to be located?
Yeah.
And I understood, again, from the staff report and what's been presented, that this is basically going to be turned over to the city. I mean, great, except for the, the next question is, it's, then becomes our responsibility to maintain it, correct?
Correct.
It is correct.
And what, do we have an estimate of what those costs might be to maintain this?
I think bronze is relatively a durable material. It's one of the reasons why it's often used for parks and, and outdoor settings. I'm not intimately familiar with the process to, to maintain it. I'm sure there is, there is some maintenance, but just like there is with any of our parks.
If I, if I could step in, I did, we worked up some numbers a while back. I think Mark might have them. The number I have in my mind was somewhere between 25 and 32,000 was the annual cost to maintain that new, was it half acre park?
That's correct.
And does that money come out of the arts fund or out of the general fund?
It'd be the general fund for the annual maintenance of the park. And if I'm not mistaken, also, there's already, some of that money might already be in our budget because we've got a separate contract with the crew that, we got an agreement with Caltrans to actually take care of their property from the freeway, all the... to actually take care of their property from the freeway all the way down to the pedestrian bridge area to basically clean up on a regular basis of trash and other materials, because we wanted it maintained at a higher standard. So we've got an annual maintenance contract, so part of that cost might actually be coming us under that contract.
Okay.
Yeah, the maintenance on our particular piece is going to be negligible. It's going to be a bronzed piece. There's no water features, that was a big issue. You guys are going to have fountains and, I'm sure there's going to be some lighting. And I just don't see much of a, of a need for the maintenance of our piece. But the park itself, the linear park, is going to be a concrete park with bronze sculptures and bike racks, pretty much low, very, very low maintenance. And, and because, you know, the foundation still wants to be involved in this piece of art, okay? We don't want to just turn it over to the city and wash our hands of it. We're going to monitor it and babysit it. And it's nice to have the city behind you to do everything. And so, you know, here we are, we're raising a lot of money to build something for the city, and it gets turned right over to the city, the city owns it. Question is, does the city want it? And I think the city wants it. I think it puts Dana Point on the map, if we're not already. But it honors our heroes. Very important. Honor the people that have been here for years and years, that grew up here all our lives. And that's why we're kind of passionate about the surf industry and the boating. We're all part of that. We've lived here so many years, and so-
Thank you. That's all, questions out for now, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions from council members? If not, we'll move to public comments, please. Thank you, Madam Quirk.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Carlos and Scott, you guys. Wonderful job, I just started getting to meet you guys, and now you're leaving, so. And maybe someday your violin design, you could be the Hobie, you could be the Hobie of violins. I love it, it's just, it's beautiful. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
That being said, we'll move on to public comments on this item. Heather Johnston, followed by Nancy Jenkins, Robbie Robertson, and Bruce Beal will be our last speaker. Okay? Heather?
Heather Johnston with the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce. I live in San Clemente, but I spend most of my time in Dana Point. I just wanted to come up and show her support for Chamber side of things. I met with a consultant the other day, and he was asking me what made Dana Point unique compared to the other coastal cities here. A lot of cities have five-star resorts, they have great shopping, some of them even have harbors, and wanted to know really what Dana Point was about. And I explained about Richard Henry Dana Jr., because of course, the Historical Society has educated me on that. But then we talked about, about Hobie and about the surf industry. And that's something that, for Dana Point, and from a tourism background, that is something that is very unique to Dana Point. I know there's the Surf City, is it at Santa Cruz, is it Huntington Beach? But it's not, it's not the fact that, do we have the most surfers here? It's the fact that we, we have, the industry was born here. And it's something that, if you look at, and I absolutely understand when you're looking at it fiscally, that it is, that's a lot of money. And you're looking at something where it's, you know, you kind of go, okay, one piece, we're going to spend, you know, the majority of our budget on this. But it's something that it's not just a piece of art. It's something that will help Dana Point build a story, and will actually in turn be a good PR effort for us. It's something that we will, can be known, where people will come from China and want to see where the first surfboards were being manufactured, and learn about Dana Point. And it's one piece, but it is something that, we have some beautiful art in Dana Point, but it's, a lot of it is, it's all gorgeous, I'm not putting anybody down, but it's not really specific, not everything, with the exception of, of our statues to Richard Henry Dana and the Heidroger. This is something that I think a younger generation can, can be attracted to. It's something that is, in thirty, forty years, is what people are going to look at Dana Point and, and see that it's such a unique place. And so, why, I understand, and I absolutely appreciate you guys looking at the budget, because I know that that's something that is very important for Dana Point. This is going to be the entryway to Dana Point. This is going to be something that, when I have a journalist calling me and asking me about what makes Dana Point unique and tell us about our history, this is going to be the first thing I'm going to talk about. So again, we ask that you support this, so thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Nancy Jenkins, please.
Nancy Jenkins, citizen of Dana Point, resident. And I want to say thank you to the mayor, and the city council, and the staff. Completely torn up what I was going to say, because almost everything's been repeated here. And I was going to tell you, I'm speaking now as behalf of the Art and Public Places, because I wear really three hats in this, so I can answer some other questions too. So I'm going to go very quickly. Art and Public Places, this is one process in which we get money to have in that. The Arts and Culture Commission is a part of this process. We are a part of you. We come to you with various recommendations. And when I first became a member of this, we had another person here that was being honored, and that was Doris Walker. And Doris Walker wrote the book, The Romance of Dana Point, and she has did a lot. And unfortunately, she died just a couple of months before Arts, our Arts and Public Culture Commission was formed. And so it was an obvious thing to do a monument for her. We had a citizens committee of people, her sons were on it, the people to help decide what the process was. And then we finally brought it to you and the city council, the members at that time, and they decided the location is on Heritage Park, and it's on the point. And if any of you haven't had a chance, it's a wonderful tribute to Dana Point. That was one process. How was money raised? We had that fund that you were talking about. But I know that some additional people donated money to that, because we knew Doris, and I did. As a matter of fact, I was just given an award, and I was, received five hundred dollars. And I didn't want that. I wanted Doris's monument to have that. So that was my own personal decision. That's my one hat I'm speaking about. I'm not going to talk about Hobie, I think you have the picture, that Hobie is another father of Dana Point, because he is really the father of the surfing industry. I'd like to just go back to a couple of questions I heard, even though they weren't addressed to me, about the fundraising part of it. It's been a very difficult, I'm going to be very honest, a very difficult process. When we went to a lot of the surfing community, and they say, yes, we really want it, but where is it going to be? Are we just going to donate money? And you're going to build this? And you're going to keep it in your shop? And so until we have a location, it just hasn't been as easy as we want. And we have, we're going to honor the different people who donate money. We have a big, three big events coming up that are going to get us a lot of money. And since I only have a few more seconds, my third hat I'm wearing tonight is purely as a citizen. And I want to tell both Carlos and Scott, my friendship and support from both of you in my various capacities, thank you. I hope you stay committed to our community.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask Ms. Jenkins one quick question?
Absolutely, Mr. Shoffel, please.
If you could prevail on you to come back up and answer just one other question. You've been on the Arts and Culture Commission since the beginning, correct?
Yes.
So you would, you would have as good a notion as anybody who's focused on the development of music, arts, and culture in the city, which is the advisory role of the commission, as to what the lay of the land is with respect to the commitment of funds that have been collected for the Arts and Public Places Reserve, and they're sort of spreading throughout the, you know, throughout the city. One of our council members tonight has mentioned that if we take two hundred thousand dollars out to, as we're being asked to do, that it would, you know, take that reserve too low, and that we wouldn't have enough left, not only currently, but possibly, you know, considering other exactions that may occur with these large projects in the future. We do have two revitalization programs that I think are both subject to the Arts and Public Places exaction, and that construction amount is quite low. That's only a million dollars worth of construction. So do you, in your opinion, as a member of that commission since 2011, is, is two hundred thousand too much, too little, just about right for a project like this?
Well, I believe the MOU states that it's going to be a match of what the foundation is going to spend, up to two hundred thousand.
So let's say that, let's say they spend, let's say they're very successful with fundraising, and we have to match up to two hundred thousand. Is that going to prejudice the ability to put art in public places throughout our other public places in town?
I haven't been at the last meeting of the foundation, so I don't want to give you any false information. But it's not going to be in what we have raised, it's going to be in what the cost is, what is expended.
So if you'd follow my question, just for a second. If we had to pay two hundred thousand dollars to realize the dream of inculcating our hero at the gateway of Dana Point, at the beginning of Highway One, is two hundred thousand dollars a good deal from the point of view of the Arts?
It's a good deal.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
You should know about art. Art is expensive, and good art is really something to be cherished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robbie Roberson, please. Roberson.
Yeah.
You already spoke, okay.
He put in three slips.
I think we've got your testimony, sir, thank you. Bruce Beal, please.
Mr. Mayor, messieurs, councilmen, staff, greetings. I hope you have had some chance to review this publication which was sent to you. It's an oceanic heritage outline. Once you've gone through this book, I believe that you will be convinced that Dana Point has not one, but two unique places in world history. World history. And that is that this origin of the modern surfing lifestyle, and the origin of the modern sailing lifestyle, and then the industries for both of those. Okay? So this document will demonstrate and underlie that. We all know the Hobie Cat was born on the beach behind Wayne Shaper's home, designed and manufactured in Capo Beach. Hobie Cat became the largest employer in South Orange County. People don't know that. And it has become the largest selling sailing vessel in the western world. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of them sold. Started here, right here. As was mentioned, Dennis Connor of the Americas Cup came to Dana Point, was interested in the catamaran, and in fact, the hulls of the first catamaran to race in Americas Cup were built in Dana Point, Capo Beach. They were built in record time, three weeks, and shipped down to San Diego so they could practice on it before they went and raced. I believe that people will come from all over to Dana Point just to see, for example, this actual-sized Hobie fourteen, this is an actual-sized boat with an actual-sized Hobie alter in it. This is not some small statue, this is the real thing. People will come from all over to see the statues of surfing legends that came from Dana Point that started all of this. And hopefully, very hopefully, they will come from all over to our world-class surfing museum. The foundation and the society are most appreciative of the interest and investment that the city and the arts and public places have shown for Dana Point's unique place in history, as evidenced by this memorial and other art pieces. Zephyr's contribution to the city, and emphasize, Zephyr's contribution to the city and the art and public places will ensure the success of this memorial. By the way, as was mentioned, the foundation will live after this. We hope to teach young people, we hope to teach young people the value of Hobie Alter, his enthusiasm, his ingenuity, his innovation, his entrepreneurialism. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Having no further public comment on this matter, I'll move it to the council for discussion. Anybody?
Yeah.
Mr. Olivera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to provide my input for the council on how I look at this project. First, I've been asked to recuse myself from this discussion because I'm associated with the Historical Society. The fact that I've been twice president and a life member, I'm afraid I am not going to recuse myself. I'm part of Dana Point. I lived here not sixty-five years, but I've been here thirty-four. So as a long-term, I'm a short timer compared to Robbie. But I'm, but I'm also from Northern California. So I grew up as a water skier on the Sacramento River. So surfing was completely strange to me. I did not know the history behind Hobie until I was living, working in the Philippines in nineteen eighty-two, when a friend of mine at work for his pastime took me down to the shop and showed me what a Hobie fourteen looked like, and that he had taken his over to the Philippines to sail on his off time. And I didn't come here until about two years after that, and it was kind of like, oh, that was a big deal. Ms. Jenkins mentioned Doris Walker's memorial tribute, I prefer to call it a tribute. Through the Historical Society, the Historical Society received an anonymous ten-dollar, a ten-dollar, ten-thousand-dollar donation that was presented to the city to help pay for that. Getting contributions, getting donations, I think once people see that it's going to be a reality, I think it will happen a lot quicker. That's always been the case. To get somebody to jump in first has always been the problem. I've been there, I know that. One thing about Art and Public Places, I'm not an art fan, so I will talk about history. And this is a piece of history. It is very important that we place our history where it can be easily seen by everybody. I know from personal experience that we collect a lot of things, that are documents, that are pieces of history, memorabilia, but they're usually kept in the museums. And we don't often get people to go to the museums. But here's an opportunity for us to put something of our history, not just art, our history on public display. I see nothing but upside to all of this. And I just wanted to share with my council, fellow council members, that I totally support this project.
Shoffel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I should probably recuse myself from this vote as well. I'm not sure why nobody asked me. But I have to confess that when I was a young man, growing up in Southern California, coastal Southern California, pretty much all the fun I had had the name Hobie attached to it. Skateboards, surfboards, you name it. Nothing quite as fun, though, but Robbie is the Hobie fourteen. And I can tell you that I spent hours and hours and hours, and most of them misspent, most of them extremely foolish, like the time I tried to sail it to Santa Cruz Island from Golita Point when I was in college, in a decision-making state that I regretted at the time, but regretted it even more when we got about ten miles out in the channel there, and had to turn back, and the Hobie fourteen got us back, as witnessed by my presence here tonight. So Hobie has been a big part of my life story, growing up in Southern California, especially in this area as well. And I think every city, as Heather mentioned, who's trying to direct as much commerce to the city as she possibly can through her organization, has to have a story. And as Carlos mentioned, that story has to be accessible and seen. And what more accessible and visible place than to put it right at the beginning of Highway One, at the entrance of our city, between two of its revitalization projects, which would be Doheny Village and the, and the Lannern District? So I'm unabashedly biased in favor of this project. Now I'm going to tell you further why I think it makes good sense from a legal, financial, and policy standpoint. Legally, I'm convinced without a formal nexus- Legally, I'm convinced, without a formal nexus study, that the exaction required of the project here is entirely proportionate to the maximum amount being sought by the requested action this evening. I think $200,000 for a project of that size, the construction cost, and the incredible opportunity to broadcast to the world Dana Point's story and the man that it's built around, not a brand, although it's a formidable brand as well, but an incredible historic icon. Arts and culture means arts and culture, and this is art, and it is Dana Point's culture. I think it's entirely proportionate, meets that requirement, is easily defensible on, you know, from a legal standpoint. From a financial standpoint, gosh, $200,000 for a fixture like that to be part of a dedicated park, right at the entry of our town, again, between two areas of our town that we hope and we plan are going to be just tremendous residential, retail, entertainment opportunities for tourists, residents, visitors, businesses, I think the value is undeniable. To put it into a little bit of perspective, and then I'll get to the policy decision, early on in the arts and public places application in this city, that decision was made by the Planning Commission, and I was sitting on the Planning Commission at the time, so there were a lot of non-artists sitting on the Planning Commission, and we would go out and solicit proposals for art pieces, because we wanted to make sure that we got real artists submitting real projects, that we could then divine some, you know, great artistic value out of. And when the fire station in Capistrano Beach was rebuilt, is that's on Victoria? Yeah. That was over $1 million, so it generated an arts and public places exaction, and we had upwards of 30 proposals. We had crystal bell chimes, you can't imagine the variety of projects that you had, most of them, to my eye, dreadful, but we went through all of them, we considered them as a commission, and we settled upon the piece that's right out in front of that station now, you may have seen it, produced by a local artist, I refer to it as the burnt bass. Anybody seen that? The burnt bass, which I love, by the way. It's not Hobie, it's not some of the incredible art that adorns the St. Regis, places, you know, places like that, but haven't we come a long way, when in one end of Capistrano Beach, our choice, our number-one choice, was the burnt bass, which is representative of certain cultural aspects of Capistrano Beach at the time, to venerating, you laugh, Robbie, we had the guy who had nightmares about that bass, who is the artist, come and tell us about his childhood trauma. Forget his name, but it was so compelling, I broke the tie on the planning.
85 years, too.
Okay, so, see, there it is. So, we have the burnt bass, but now we have a choice to really move, to really vault the city forward, to venerate, again, one of our most important stories in terms of the notoriety that this town has developed, and to really burnish its culture, and to do so in a legally proportionate way, a way that is a promoter of economic development, and is entirely in keeping with what we actually designed the arts and public places program to do in the first place, is to get those works out for public consumption. I would love to see that story told right at the beginning of Highway One. I would love everybody visiting Doheny Village, visiting Lannern District, coming over from the harbor, to have a chance to say, look, who is that? Let's stop, read the sign, maybe enjoy the other art, maybe, I think it's a tremendous opportunity. I'm very proud and I'm very grateful, and one of my last decisions on this council, you know, I have the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and respected members of the council, to make my very strong feelings about that heard, so, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schoeffel. I'll start my comments right now. I've been coming here since I was 1967 and visited my grandparents' house on Beach Road, and I think that's where some of the first Hobie Cats were launched. Still there. They're still there, and particularly, I remember an orange one down the way, and, you know, I got my raft from Thrifty, the little blue raft, after about three rods, it would be deflated and useless, and I looked down at the Hobie Cat, and I was just a little boy, I said, man, I need to get me one of those when I grow up, so, it's been a part of my heritage that I've always witnessed down here in Capistrano Beach, and, you know, it's a real eye-opener, when one of those takes off from the beach, it's like, wow, how do they do that? So, I mean, it's part of Capistrano Beach, part of Dana Point, and part of our heritage, and I've been involved in arts and public places programs in other cities, and as Scott would say, I've been extracted, my family's been extracted for some art pieces, and they are very expensive, and it seems pretty affordable to me from comparing from what my family's paid for some art pieces, and as for the maintenance, you know, some of those sculptures were built 25 years ago, and there's been required very little maintenance on bronze, it's very durable, and I drive by those statues every day, and they haven't changed much in 25 years, so the bronze is very durable. I suspect that most of the maintenance costs would be go to the rest of the park and not to preservation of the statue, so, I don't have any concern about that. And I think the funds that have been sitting around in the Arts Committee Fund, this is a perfect use for them. They've been sitting there for a while, and it's time we spend something on our community for something like this, this important, this great, and I'm also very much in favor of this sculpture for the reasons I've just stated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to laugh when you said, Mr. Joe Sketch, that sculpture out on a napkin, because I think I remember hearing the same story, that's how Hobie designed the first Hobie Cat, in the sand. And I was like, wow, I mean, keep that napkin, okay? You know, my concern here is the amount of money being spent, only in the fact that it's all in one place. I mean, the fund hasn't really been utilized up to this point anyway, but I'd like to see more around the city, and my concern is, once we give this money, or commit this money, your fundraising effort is going to stop at $200,000. That's what I don't want to see happen. I think this community will rally around, and you'll be able to raise enough funds that the city shouldn't have to commit half of it. I'm very much in favor of this project, I have been since that first time I heard it. I'm excited about the Zephyr location for it. There are some concerns about the Surf Heritage Museum, are we going to be able to get it close enough that they can, that they're relevant to each other? So, that's something that, yeah, I think we need to be very aware of, and committing the Hobie sculpture to Zephyr kind of limits where we're going to be able to put the museum if we want those two to tie together, so that's kind of a concern of mine, but, you know, the reality is this, I mean, there's three votes on the council right now, we've already heard it, so, I do support this, I think Mr. Roberson's, his story, kind of put me over the edge on why this is so important, and Mr. Olivera bringing up the point that I didn't really think that, you know, rain trees coming around are going to have to probably do some in-lu fees, I find it hard to believe they'll be able to put all their art on one location. So, yeah, you're going to, it has my support, and, but just please promise me you don't stop your fundraising efforts at $200,000, because we'd like to be able to do some stuff in other parts of the cities as well. Thanks.
Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, we've heard all the speakers, and it is, you know, what a great thing for the city, and we are all in support of this, and, you know, I really, you know, want to get on board and excited, just like everyone else, and, you know, really want to support this project. I do want to state a few things, though I do have a few concerns, and they're about the financial aspect, obviously. It's not the excitement for the project, or the appropriateness of it, of course, I think we all agree on that, so it really just comes down to the financing, and, you know, I think a really good point was brought up, both, I think Councilman Miller just said it, Ms. Jenkins said it as well, with the fundraising. The issue seems to be, well, let me start by saying, I personally think we have such a strong surf industry, I think some of my questions are going in that direction, I find it hard to believe we can't raise the money for this without the city having to pay for it. I'm surprised, but I guess the answer isn't, you know, no, it's not going to happen, it's just been a little difficult up until now. The issue, if I understood what Ms. Jenkins said, was they don't know where it's going to go. I think we're all committed to saying we're going to put it in this park, in South Cove, in the Zephyr Project. I mean, I think that's something we can all do here tonight, and what I want to do is make sure we help the fundraising of the foundation, and that's why I said I think Councilman Miller made a very good point about, I mean, if you're being asked to give money and you already know that the city is kicking in half the money, why would you give anything? It certainly, I think, is going to make it more difficult to do fundraising for the foundation, so, I know we haven't had a motion yet to move forward with this, you know, one thing that concerns me also is that I haven't actually seen the draft of the MOU or what's in it, you know, I'd like to see that before we vote on that, or at least, what I would propose is, I think maybe we can move it forward tonight by, and I hope that some of my fellow council members will, you know, discuss this as well, or at least take the idea seriously that, you know, maybe there's some way we can structure it to accomplish all those goals. One, make sure that we show the city's committed to this project, and we are designating this area where we are going to put the memorial. Two, we want to make sure that the fundraising efforts are not hampered, so, and I'm open to ideas here, but maybe we do it in phases, or the MOU talks about, you know, we're matching, again, I'm throwing out numbers, but, you know, $50,000 at a time, or whatever it might be, and once that's matched, and maybe that will help with other fundraises, and they'll see that the city is serious, because, again, it's, the project itself, I think, has unanimous support in the location. It really is just our responsibility of how to spend the city's money, and, like I said before, I'm surprised that we can't raise this money from the surf industry, so, you know, I know there's no motion yet, but I guess I'm throwing it out for discussion, I don't know if it needs to be a motion and a second, perhaps no one will second, perhaps no one wants to discuss that, but that would be something I'd throw out for discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, and I do appreciate the Mayor Protem's comments, the recommended action in the staff report is the city council authorize the acting city manager to negotiate enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hobie Memorial Foundation for fabrication of the Hobie Memorial at the new linear park fronting Pacific Coast Highway in an amount as described in the fiscal impact section, and I think we've discussed with particularity the amounts that are in the financial impact section, so, I think the recommended action is very clearly stated. I would make a motion that the council approve the recommended action, certainly it's open to more discussion, as suggested by the Mayor Protem. I think the project's ready to go, I think it's a bargain if they don't raise another penny.
I'll second it. It's been regularly moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Okay, the vote is four to one with Mayor Protem Vixoric voting in the nay. Thank you. Moving on to new business, item number 11, staff report, Mr. Kilbrough.
Before you is the annual, comprehensive annual financial report, or audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016. Want to point out, before I get into this year's numbers, that for the prior year, the fiscal year 15 report, we did again receive the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that was the 27th year in a row that the city has met all those standards and received that certification. With that, before you tonight, we're asking you to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report. Like I said, we did have an independent audit conducted by Vavronek, Trine, Day, and Company, and they concluded that there was a reasonable basis for rendering an unmodified opinion, in the old days you used to call that unqualified opinion, clean opinion, that the financial statements are fairly presented in conformance with generally accepted accounting principles. There were no findings of material weaknesses involving the city's systems of internal controls or in its operations. Real quick, I want to point out that our, we did give a rollover report, well, I gave a year-end update in June that was pretty close to having the books closed, and then I did a rollover report in September that gave an update using the unaudited numbers. I'm reporting now that the actual ending fund balances for the general fund were $20,165,000 at June 30, 2016, which was $50,000 more than had been estimated in our year-end rollover report when we got done processing all the adjusting entries. Also want to mention that that $20,165 does include fully funded reserves in accordance with the city council's policies. Further, over the past 20 years, the city's general fund has had surpluses in 17 of those years, operating surpluses, including $3.5 million reporting in this annual CAFER, Annual Financial Report. The three years where there were actually operating deficits during that 20-year period were during the depths of the recession in fiscal year 10, fiscal year 11, and fiscal year 12, and honestly, through the depths of the recession, we had openly communicated that we would be operating in that manner as we worked to survive the downturn in some of our revenues, particularly our largest transient occupancy tax that was off 40% from its height, and it has since returned. The cumulative operating surpluses for the general fund over that 20-year period, so it's the net of those three years of losses, the cumulative surplus was $74 million, and I want to point out that surpluses were leveraged with using grant funds, that when you look at the additions to our capital assets over those periods, we made $133 million worth of investments in capital assets over that same 20-year period. So, we did finish fiscal year 16 better than we had anticipated when the budget was adopted. I do want to thank Bev Breon, who's going to be my shadow here for questions, and her staff for the exemplary work in keeping our books, and with that, I'm here to answer questions.
Any questions from council members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment portion, and then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Olivera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed on the walls and throughout City Hall, maybe staff can help me, a number of citations that we have received from financial institutions throughout the state of California commending us on our outstanding reports. Could you elaborate on that, Mr. Kilbrough?
The, some of them that I mentioned early on here are the Government Finance Officers Association, so, again, that goes back 27 years, that's a, the Government Finance Officers Association is a national organization that also includes Canada, it's got finance professionals, government finance professionals involved in it, and there are reviewers that take our financial reports and go through them, and they go through checklists and make sure that everything is reported in accordance with accounting standards, so we've received that 27 years in a row, and I, in a prior life, I was a reviewer for several years, and we've actually had one of our staff in training doing some reviews, I thought that was a good learning experience for that, and I know in the past the city had received budget awards too, from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers.
Thank you for that extra report. I'm, the only other comment, I'm disappointed that Mr. Buck Hill isn't here, who's rigorously challenging and chastising us on our budget, and he has had the problems in the past of learning how to read one. I think this report is, ought to put an end to that negative criticism. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, I'll move the recommended action. Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next item, number 12, Mr. Kilbrough.
This is, this item is for the council to discuss, the next meeting date in this month, which is, would be the meeting date for- which is, would be the meeting date for the transition for the outgoing council members, as well as seating the new ones. We did receive certification this afternoon from the registrar voters. Typically, I guess our next meeting would be Tuesday, the 20th, and I was asked to add this item on the agenda for the council to have a discussion about possibly having it on a different date.
Schoffel.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did, two meetings ago, discuss a policy going forward in the years in which, because of the way the calendar falls, or because of the number of measures on the ballot, or the moon is in the seventh house, or however, whatever, causes a bit of a delay in the return getting back, so that everybody knew what the rule would be. The rule was that there would, in those years, there would be a second meeting, and it would be the third Tuesday of the month. But it's come to my attention that one of our council members has a very special occasion. Can I disclose it?
Sure.
His mother is getting married. Now, how many people get to see your mother get married? I know, I didn't get to see my mother get married. And maybe, maybe, maybe some of you did. But Councilman Miller's mother is getting married back in the state of Texas. And like the good son that he is, he will, he plans to be back there, standing up and honoring that. And I think in that very special case, the council should consider setting a special meeting, say, a week from tonight. I would propose the 14th at 5:00 to, if that, if I might ask the council members-elect in the audience, does that work for you guys?
Why don't you guys come up to the podium, please? Welcome to the council chamber, Deborah Lewis and Paul Wyatt. Come on up, please.
Thank you. Have my council outfit on.
And I thought of the 14th somewhat selfishly, because it works for me. So, and I have conflicts on many of those other, so, we can certainly discuss it. But would that accommodate your schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay. It would accommodate, it would make sure that Councilman Miller can be here for the reorganization and the closing meeting of the year, and that's always a special meeting. And will, are you folks available on the 14th to raise your right hand?
Yeah, I'm available on the 14th. I would ask, if at all possible, if we could move it to six, so my husband can get home.
That sounds like another special consideration. Okay, six, on the 14th?
Mr. Olivera?
Yes.
You're good?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
I was there.
You're good? I'm also good.
You guys are good?
I'm good.
So, I would, I would move that for this year only, we convene a special meeting of the Dana Point City Council, 6:00 on September, or December the 14th.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
If my calendar is correct, a week from today is December 13.
I said, I said roughly a week.
Okay, roughly, whatever.
Yeah.
But if it's 13.
Yeah, my calendar says the same thing.
Well, that's good.
It's remarkable. It's a miracle. So, yeah, so it'd be Wednesday, as Ms. Chanel points out, 6:00 December the 14th, right here in the council chambers.
Schoffel, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Pass and discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. It's a motion for a special meeting. Maybe I could refer to the city attorney.
Technically, it's not going to be a special meeting. I was going to suggest that we adjourn this meeting to that date, which would make it a regular adjourned meeting.
And I will amend my motion to match that most astute change.
And I will second, second amended motion.
So, the, we would adjourn this meeting to the 14th at 6:00, and take up the business then. Okay?
Please cast your votes.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, guys, on your upcoming.
Thank you, and congratulations to your mom.
Okay, moving on to the next item, city council organization. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank a member of this council who's served this council and planning commission tirelessly and selflessly for over 20 years. And you've heard some testimony from, in chambers tonight, from Mr. Rayfield and Mr. Erkanoff about some of Scott's achievements over the last 20 years and his dedication. So, therefore, I won't delve into that any further, because you gentlemen have aptly described that already. But what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Schoffel for mayor for one last meeting, to sit up here in the mayor's seat and run the meeting for one last time, for thank you for running the city and being involved with the city for over 20 years.
I'll support the mayor in that suggestion.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, are you saying we're appointing him mayor tonight, or just for the meeting?
No, I'm going to, I would like to appoint him tonight, for tonight, to be the mayor for, till the next meeting.
So, he'll be the mayor for a week?
For a week, yes, sir.
I can give your mother a proclamation for her wedding.
All right. Okay. Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. On that note, Schoffel, your gavel, your meeting, please.
Here the mayor. Since we're doing a reorg, do we have to do the pro tem as well? Since we're doing a reorg, I've got a quick question, though. I mean, I know I just thought on this, for clarification. So, will we reorg again after the new council's seated?
Of course, we have to.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to, since Mr. Schoffel will not be the mayor after that.
Got it, got it. Okay, okay. So, we can just do it by doing one, we don't have to worry about the pro tem or anything like that, so we're good.
There's only one motion.
Good, done. Thanks.
Okay. So, is there, is there a need to reorganize with respect to the pro tem? It's up to the council.
There's not a legal need.
I would, I would at least like to set forth the possibility, because I'm so honored and so grateful by this gesture of being able to hand the gavel off to Mr. Tomlinson as, you know, as I leave the council on the December the 14th at 6:00 p.m. or shortly thereafter. Is there support for that? Okay, that would be my, my motion, and that's a short eight days, as mentioned by Ms. Chanel. So, the motion would be to John Tomlinson, our mayor of up till four minutes ago, who I think did a very, very fine job this year as his, as his mayor, old term as mayor pro tem until that time. Is that a second, Mr. Olivera?
Yes, that's a second.
Wait. I thought I'd just ask that question, but.
You did.
Yes, you did.
I'm okay with, and I don't want to be disrespectful to the outgoing mayor or to the present mayor. But I think this is a really more of a, I don't know what the right term for this, a gesture as a thank you to all your great service. But I also don't think it's appropriate to unseat our current mayor pro tem for eight days. So, you know, I can't support that motion, because I just don't, this is mostly ceremonially in my mind that this is happening. And so, you know, that's great if you want to step down and give that to Mr. Schoffel. But I don't think we should unseat our current mayor pro tem. That doesn't make sense to me. Sorry.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Mr. Olivera?
Call for the vote.
Okay, we'll call the question. And it looks like there's three votes to give the honorary position of mayor pro tem to Mr. Tomlinson for, until our time of adjournment. Okay, your agenda is up here. That takes us to staff reports. Mr. Kilabrew?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing this evening, other than to say congratulations to our two council members-elect.
Okay, that brings us to council reports. And, Mr. Olivera, is it okay with, we start with you?
Yes, nothing to report.
And Mr. Tomlinson?
Yes, I'd like to say I helped light the Christmas tree for a couple of times this past week. And my favorite one was the kids from Danham Hills Middle School. And to see the 93 kids out there this blustery day that we did on Friday, last Friday, was quite a moving moment. And it's one of the most enjoyable parts of being the mayor, is to be able to go out there and see those kids and experience them, and let them see Santa Claus rolling on the fire truck. And that was quite a, quite a thing. The next Christmas tree lighting, I didn't fumble, I fumbled the light switch. It was, took a couple of extra seconds to get the Christmas tree on. But, so I apologize for that. But thank you. That's the end of my report for right now. I will turn in my list of meetings to the city clerk later.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Vixorick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report. I've already turned in my list of events to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the council for accommodating my schedule. I thought it was very important that the entire council be together when we seat our new council members and say goodbye to our outgoing council members, and also for our reorgs. I really want to thank the council for supporting that. And I will get my list of meetings to the clerk. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Miller. And to all of you who are still left out there, and all of you who may be watching, a very happy holiday season. We have a lot to be grateful for here in the city of Dana Point. We're looking forward to getting our new council members seated next week, and getting on with the business of making the city the greatest city in the world. With that, we'll adjourn to December 14th at 6:00.